Gary, would you lead us in prayer, please? Or pledge.
Pledge.
Got it. Pledge.
Pledge.
Pledge. Now, pledge your allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the parlor for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you please lead us in prayer?
Sure. Father God in heaven, we come to you in the mighty name of Jesus, asking for your direction, God, asking for your help, humbly coming before you, Lord. We ask that you will give us guidance today, in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
James, roll call.
Yes, sir. Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Foster?
Hurky and present.
Counselor Sagala?
Here.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
The quorum is declared. Modifications to agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is modifications to the agenda. Tonight, we would like to add an F1, a Veterans Day proclamation. We would also like to add an L1, a contract for the Optimistics, a discussion for the contract for the Optimistics, and P, executive session for legal advice from the city attorney.
And one more item, I'm sorry, it won't be a report for kids' connection. Sorry. Oh. Okay. Optimistics and... Amen. We definitely have an executive session.
No, can you vote again?
Well, we got a vote on modifications. Yes.
Oh, okay. Anyone who said that? Oh, well, I move to modify the agenda as stated by the city clerk.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to modify the agenda as stated by the city clerk. Is there any more discussion? James? Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Sagala?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries? Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting, October 15th, 2020, and review and approval of accounts payable.
Motion to approve consent agenda and accounts payable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with minutes of regular meeting, October 15th, 2020, review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? James? Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Sagala?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries? Okay, proclamations, communications, and appointments. Gary, would you please read the proclamation?
I would be happy to, sir, thank you. A proclamation, whereas it has long been our custom to commemorate November 11th as the anniversary of the ending of World War I by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle and by rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace, and whereas in intervening years, the United States has been involved in other great military conflicts which have added millions of veterans, both men and women, living and passed on, to the honor roles of this nation, and whereas this great nation and state of Colorado and San Luis Valley and all its towns neighboring our city of Montevista represent a great number in that honor role, and whereas we seek to honor those in the service of this country during the week of November 11th, and whereas certain group activities are limited during the current virus outbreak, and whereas it is our privilege and sacred obligation as a free and independent people to acknowledge and pay tribute to those who by whose commitment and sacrifice have made this freedom and independence possible. Now therefore, Mayor of the city of Montevista, do hereby declare the coming week of November 11th to be Honor Veterans Week, and that businesses, government offices, and public venues shall display our flag and other acknowledgements of their sacrifice and service on November 11th and throughout the week as possible and appropriate. On that day and forever forward, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us re-consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace by God's grace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. Amen.
That was good.
Thank you, Gary.
What time?
I said, "Thank you."
Go to citizen comments. Special presentations. In order to be included in this portion of the agenda, please file an appropriate form to the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Are you doing the presentations, Neil?
Just the first one.
Oh.
So, tonight before you, I'd like to give an award to James Stewart for one year of service. He is the deputy clerk for the city clerk's office. He's doing a fabulous job. He has made a lot of improvement in our records retention program. I put him in charge of the records retention program, and he's made strides beyond belief. Our back filing room is almost cleaned up perfectly, so I just want to thank him for his service and hopefully many more to come.
Thank you. All right. So, you guys are gonna give each other...
Yeah. Since our beloved chief is not here.
Yeah, in the absence of him. So, we're both recognizing each other for our five years of service to the Montevista Police Department. I'd like to give this one to Angela Bonnemeyer.
And I'm gonna give this one to Sergeant Michael Martinez.
And, and thank you for five years.
And, Michael, thank you for five years.
Put the coats on.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We'll see ya.
Yeah.
I guess you'll leave. Okay. Good night, guys.
Good night.
Optimistics presentation and request for funding.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. We want to thank you for allowing the Optimistic Citizens Action Group to make our presentation to you this evening. I am Adam Locke. I live at 308 First Avenue here in Montevista. I'm sure most of you know me by now, but as a quick recap, I'm the manager of SL Voices, a board member of the Montevista Chamber of Commerce, the secretary of our local amateur radio and emergency communications group, and co-founder of the Optimistics Group, among other things. Tonight, we want to bring you up to date on what we're doing, where we're going, our request to the city to please aid us in our efforts. Some in our group are actually here tonight. Thank you for being here, and after this short presentation, please don't hesitate to ask us more questions. The Optimistics are a grassroots citizen action group. We formed to facilitate positive change here in Montevista. We are all very progressive, forward-thinking people. We're solution-oriented. We're able to dedicate a lot of time to what we're doing, and we have a very can-do attitude. That's kind of our prerequisites. This is working good, all right? Our mission statement is basically focused on aiding both Montevista and the city of Montevista, Montevista, excuse me, Montevista businesses and the city through such things as our revitalization efforts, improvements in the use of social media, and creating a sense of place for people here in the city. Our purpose simply lays out in a nutshell the multi-phased approach that we're utilizing to accomplish the goals and objectives, including helping businesses with their online presence, working with successful existing entities such as Downtown Colorado, Inc., exploring and obtaining available funding, increasing interest in shopping locally, as well as attracting tourism, and assisting the city in improving our overall curb appeal. This is a list of some of the people who have attended our meetings or we've talked to and have expressed a very strong interest in working with our group, believe in our missions and our projects. We really appreciate each and every one of you who have been a part of us and what they all bring to the table. This slide shows an outline of the timeline of the group from our initial formation back in February, technically officially formed in February, up through last month. To date, we've put together a things-to-do list in the San Luis Valley using Montevista as the central hub. We launched a website and social media presence. We've launched a successful Montevista is Open for Business campaign. We've worked actively with the Colorado Tourism Office, still working with them, to update Montevista's information. We're consulting with Downtown Colorado, Inc., and a lot of other things. Now, these next three slides are gonna detail the downtown beautification project. This is phase one, and it's Adams Street. We have to start some marks, starting small and move up from there. It includes getting the lighting turned back on, adding or fixing awnings, repairing, building facades where needed, painting of the facades, and the hanging of signage. It's important to note, too, that our intent with all of this is to provide this to our businesses at little or no cost to them at all. For example, we just received some test LED lighting that'll automatically turn on at dusk and turn off at dawn, and we're also in active discussions with XL regarding their lighting reimbursement program, so a lot going on on several fronts. Our focus on phase one is the 100 block of Adams Street, and we've been up and down the street several times looking to try to determine what really is needed to bring this up, and this is the result of what we believe is needed to do so. Now, this slide is our anticipated phase two and three and four of the project. Simply put, once we finish in the one phase, we want to expand outward from city central, moving out in each direction. Additionally, at the end of each phase, we are planning on having plaques mounted somewhere in that phase area, noting such things as Hogwarts, who was involved, any major donors. It's a simple way to recognize the people we're working with and any benefactors as we go along. It's important to note, too, at this point, that one of our underlying objectives is to spend as much money that we receive locally with local businesses here, in a manner that will always be possible, but it really is a focus of the group, and as you'll see over the next few slides, several of the quotes that we received are, were attained locally. We ran a cost analysis in the outdoor lighting to show how little it's actually gonna cost the downtown businesses to leave the lights on, again, from dusk to dawn, using nine-watt high-efficiency LED lights, given a rough cost of 10 cents per kilowatt-hour and an average of 11 hours and 49 minutes of darkness. Of course, that's based over an entire year. So, given those parameters, it's gonna cost these businesses about $3.88 per year per light. That's it. We believe this to be a very minor cost in the overall scheme of things, and it's really gonna add significantly to the curb appeal of the downtown shopping district. I mean, you saw the opening slide, what Adams Street looks like, all lit up, well, wait till it's all lit up, with fresh coats of paint, awnings, signs, and everything else. It's just gonna be remarkable, and that's where we're headed with this. Now, based on the standard three-by-four recommended size for signs, we have options on signing. We could use aluminum, plastic, or even wood, and we have a new woodworker in town who has expressed interest in doing that. Most of the businesses on Adams Street already have the hanging mounting brackets in place, you know, to hang the double sides from. The awnings are gonna really be one of the most expensive parts of the project. Fortunately, most businesses either have an awning frame already in place, so they'll only need, there's only five businesses estimated at this point that will need the full frame and the awning, and only four businesses need just the fabric replaced at this time. Now, as noted in this slide, the expected needs of each building is gonna vary as far as whether needing just repair, or washing, scraping, or just painting. The cost we list here is really the average over the entire project for the 100 block of Adams Street. The next several slides are gonna cover in a little more detail what we've been able to accomplish so far. First, of course, is the Montevista is Open for Business campaign that we conducted back in June of this year. It really helped promote our local businesses as we started to come out with that first COVID lockdown, and we thought it was really important to let people know, hey, with businesses that are open here, please come shop local in our town, and we collectively bore any costs that were involved. We utilized a multi-pronged media approach, and really, it was a successful campaign in the end. We're actively working with the Colorado Tourism Office on several fronts. CTO's website takes millions of hits a year. It's a huge thing for the state, and it draws tourists from all over the world to our state, and of course, right here to Montevista. Unfortunately, the information from Montevista was very sorely lacking up until this year. We've updated the information, the pictures, we're getting even more tourist-related local businesses listed on the site. When we first started, it was maybe three or four in the entire town, and that's changed, and we've got many more that are still coming on board, so this is an active project that we're already in the middle of. Now, we're also working in, yes, we're working in conjunction with Colorado Tourism, our local chamber, and the SLB Museum Trail Association to create one-to-three-day road trips that are gonna appear on the CTO's website. Our first S road trip is already done, and we're just waiting to get it on the site. Given the ongoing COVID situation, CTO themselves have refocused from bringing tourists outside of the state to focusing on travel in our own state, so we're taking that direction with them as well, and why we're creating these particular road trips. Again, with Montevista as the centric, you go out, visit a couple things, come back, go out another direction, visit a couple things, come back, one-to-three-day road trips. We're also in the initial stages of creating an audio walking or driving tour for Montevista specifically. This is part of what we're doing with the Museum Trail Association, and once this is completed, you'll be able to pull it up in your phone as an app, and it senses where you are, and when you get to a certain spot, it starts telling you about the history of a particular town, city. If it's a driving thing, in our case, we want to specifically focus on the historic nature of Montevista itself. We did launch our website and social media presence back in September. The cost was, again, borne internally. Between these outlets and email, though, we're able to quickly and effectively communicate with all of our members, as well as residents here and people in outlined communities, and yes, rest assured, cities such as Alamosa are watching us, they know who we are, and they want to know what we're doing. We do continue to move ahead, as we continue to move ahead, excuse me, with our foundational organizational paperwork. We've had to face some hard realities, such as how long it's gonna take to obtain a nonprofit status from the IRS, and it's a ridiculous long amount of time. So, in the interim, we met with our chamber, and the board of directors has agreed to assist our group by accepting and holding any funds obtained. This was voted on and approved by the Montevista Chamber Board in August. One of our members, sorry, next slide. Now, one of our members, Sean Davis, is gonna be taking up a sidewalk cleanup project, and that's gonna start in early spring. This will be including cleaning the downtown sidewalks of weed and debris, maintaining them throughout the growing season, so as people walk downtown, it looks nice even as far as the ground, and this project might even include participation of our local school system, where he's talking with them about this, too. So, something else exciting. Now, as y'all may recall, the city of Montevista opted not to work with Downtown Colorado, Inc. earlier this year, but the Optimistics have picked up this relationship, and we're actively working with them on several fronts, including funding or grant opportunities. This is one of the reasons we believe it's so important for the city of Montevista to be behind our project and our objectives here. We are, of course, actively partnering with the local Chamber of Commerce. They really understand and see the benefits of our focus. It's to aid existing local businesses, increasing our curb appeal overall for the shopping district, enticing businesses to relocate here, encouraging local shopping, all of which obviously is gonna ultimately raise taxes for our city, so we see it as a real win-win situation. These final slides are gonna cover our existing funding partners, the first, of course, being you, the city of Montevista. You know, as expressed in the city council meeting on August 20th, our group made an initial presentation to you at the time. The double funds that were part of that money earmarked for DCI, as we understand, have been returned, but the city still has, as we understand, that original $5,000 for the DCI project. At that meeting, you did express a willingness to learn more about this and possibly allocate those funds to the Optimistics. Our co-founder, Ken Hamcull, I don't know Ken, has a very strong working relationship with the executive director of DCI, that's Cat Correll. They, you guys talk, what, every week? More. Probably more than that even, right? Well, we're actively partnering with DCI in obtaining other available funding, such as what they have now as their placemaking program grant. Some of the available funding or grants are going to require us to have initial funding already in place, though, that is either matched or exceeded by other organizations such as DCI. There is also available from the Rio Grande Tourism Board specifically to encourage tourism in our town and area, some funding available there. Now, there is another local group that is specifically focused on local tourism for Montevista in building all of that up. Some of the Optimistic members are part of that group as well, and our intent is to have both groups work together where we can, specifically the where they involve increasing local tourism from outside of the valley. The Chamber of Commerce has, sorry, the Chamber of Commerce has also agreed to allow the Optimistic group to use the proceeds from the swoop of the cranes for the downtown beautification project, and that's really exactly what those funds were originally intended for in the first place. So, to close, our entire project relies heavily on our ability to obtain, you know, funding, and that includes that $5,000 from the city of Montevista that was originally earmarked for the DCI project. This is gonna allow us to show matching funds for grants that our group is already ready to apply for with other organizations. Now, when Ken originally, excuse me, when he originally introduced our group to you in August, it was strongly suggested we put together a presentation to let you know what we've done, where we're going, our intent, and everything else. Well, yep, here's our presentation. So, the Optimistic Citizens Action Group, we respectfully request that the city of Montevista do grant our request to transfer that $5,000 allocated for downtown improvement to the Montevista Chamber of Commerce specifically for use with the projects that we've outlined. Thank you all for your attention to this, and your interest in our projects. We're really excited about what we're doing. We're honestly having a lot of fun doing it, too. It's exciting to see the change and the buzz happening downtown. I do want to thank our other members for attending, and at this point, invite my co-founder, Ken, to the stand for any questions that you may have. Thank you. You wanna say, okay, well, that's right.
And so, actually, counsel, since this item is on the agenda later, fairly shortly, actually, under contracts agreements, the leases, perhaps, if you have questions for the Optimistics, you can have a discussion under contracts? Right. Whether you want funding or not, a few questions and some ideas we might have to help.
Actually, since you brought that up, I do just have the one question about transferring the funds. If we're in favor of that, is there anything else we need to do?
Yes, counselor, I think we're gonna discuss that more. We're gonna discuss that more at that point, I agree.
That's what I was after, yeah.
Yeah, we'll discuss it when we get down to the checks button. Thank you. Just sat tight, you gentlemen. Citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit the comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting.
Come on, Margot.
Yeah. I didn't see you, Mr. Margot.
Hello, everybody, city council, everyone. Pleased to be here. I just wanted to say Halloween was a fantastic success in our block. That, I bet I had eighty-some children, and they were maybe five and down in age, adorable dressed, parents with masks standing in the back, had a few older kids, maybe eight to ten, but it was, I mean, it was just a delight, and I just had more fun passing out candy to all the kids, and I just wanted to say yay for Monty for letting us have Halloween. Thank you, and enjoy the holiday. Thank you.
Thanks, Margot.
Thanks, Margot.
Anybody else? Jim? Good to see you. Becca? Yeah. Got your opportunity. All right. Go to ordinances. Second, final reading of ordinance 905, an ordinance revising the city of Montevista's zoning ordinance permitting micro home and tiny house structures and providing further definition on accessory dwelling units.
Good evening, counsel. So, before you is the second reading of ordinance 905. This is an ordinance revising the city of Montevista's zoning ordinance permitting micro home and tiny house structures and providing further definition on accessory dwelling units on a second reading.
My second reading. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 905. Is there any more discussion? James? Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Sagala?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries? Okay. Ordinance 907, an ordinance amending tables 12-3 use chart of the Montevista Municipal Code and removing the special review use designation for religious institute and commercial highway and commercial business.
So, counsel, before you is the ordinance 907, as stated by Mayor Becker. This is to amend the, excuse me, Chapter 12, Table 12-3 of this Montevista Municipal Code. What this will do is remove the special reuse, special review use for religious institutes in commercial highway and commercial businesses. We allow religious institutes in all the other zone districts. They don't have to go through special review use, and the voice of the citizens would like to maintain the integrity of the downtown for businesses, retail businesses, and this is something that honestly should have been done a long time ago, considering that we have allowed and we do allow for religious institutes in all other zone districts. And this is first reading.
I move that we approve ordinance 907, ordinance amending table 12-3 use chart of the Montevista Municipal Code and removing the special review use designation for religious institute and commercial highway and commercial business.
All right, take it back. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 907. Is there any more discussion? James? Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Sagala?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries? Okay. Ordinance 907, an ordinance amending tables 12-3 use chart of the Montevista Municipal Code and removing the special review use designation for religious institute and commercial highway and commercial business.
So, counsel, before you is the ordinance 907, as stated by Mayor Becker. This is to amend the, excuse me, Chapter 12, Table 12-3 of this Montevista Municipal Code. What this will do is remove the special reuse, special review use for religious institutes in commercial highway and commercial businesses. We allow religious institutes in all the other zone districts. They don't have to go through special review use, and the voice of the citizens would like to maintain the integrity of the downtown for businesses, retail businesses, and this is something that honestly should have been done a long time ago, considering that we have allowed and we do allow for religious institutes in all other zone districts. And this is first reading.
I move that we approve ordinance 907, ordinance amending table 12-3 use chart of the Montevista Municipal Code and removing the special review use designation for religious institute and commercial highway and commercial business.
All right, take it back. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 907. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the wording, removing the special review use designation in commercial. As it stands right now, we don't have, that is one of the areas where it is not optional to have a religious institution, right?
So, currently, our regulation states that if you are in a commercial business or commercial highway, you can apply for a special review use to allow a religious institute within those two zone districts. By removing that, we'll remove the ability to have a religious institute in those two zone districts because we allow it in all the other zone districts. So, commercial business, commercial highway, and industrial will be the only three zone districts that a religious institute would not be allowed at all. You want to do a religious institute, you residential low-density, residential high-density, any of those can have a religious institute by right, right now.
So, this is not just the commercial highway issue. This extends to businesses.
Correct.
So, just to be clear, if another church wanted to apply for a conditional use permit or variance in a commercial area, it wouldn't be possible?
Correct. This removes that.
So what are the other ones that are left?
So, all the other zone districts, residential low density, residential high density, mobile home.
Residential media, manufactured housing, manufactured single wide, so all the other zoning districts of the city, except for industrial, commercial business, commercial highway. And those are already allowed by right.
Do you have one?
They're allowed by right, counselor, so you don't have to do any application for them, other than if you're building a new one, you'd have to have a partner to plan and those kind of things. But they are by right, so.
And this was actually something that had been brought forward a long time ago to preserve the downtown districts for retail businesses and that type of thing. And it was never corrected back then. A few years ago, it was just never corrected. So, we're at the wish of the citizens of Montevista is the reason we're bringing this ordinance before you.
And who are the, where did that come from? You say the citizens of Montevista, what do they mean?
We have, what, twenty-five signatures on a petition?
Okay.
That was brought forward at the council meeting.
Yeah, that's interesting. Yeah, I would disagree with the part about the commercial. That's been a standard option in many communities, including this one, for a long time.
But it's never been a standard option in this community. It's always been a special review use.
Well, that's what I mean, special, a special review use that could be at least considered. What we're saying now is it couldn't be considered.
Well, ultimately, there's nothing that's ever absolute, and an applicant could seek a variance. That doesn't forego that possibility, but it, you know, variance has a higher standard than, you know, what would be the reason for that. So it's possible, but it does certainly generally preclude it.
I think there's some issues there because there are residences. I mean, we say that churches are allowed in residences, and there are houses that are zoned CH, and they would not be able to hold, start a church there.
Houses that are zoned CH?
Correct.
If a house is in a CH zone, the use as a house as residence is grandfathered, but other uses that are not commercial aren't allowed.
Right. So if you had a house and you were zoned in CH and you wanted to hold a church there, you couldn't do it.
Under the proposed regulation, that's correct.
That's what I thought it was. So to say that you could have it anywhere, you got a house, it's allowed in all zones, is a little bit of a misnomer because I can think of a dozen houses right now that are zoned CH, where we now are forcing, you know, this to make it more difficult for people who want to worship how they want to choose to.
Or we're making it easier for business, retail, and dining to maintain a business district so that we can entice tourism and we can entice a business district and local shopping. Just depends on how you want to look at it.
Do we have a map on commercial highway and commercial business still?
Do we have one?
I, I have it on my phone.
Well, I don't know, a phone, yeah. You want a big map?
It's okay.
Yeah, mine's in the wall, you grab that, though.
So, removing the special review use designation does not remove the possibility, as you were saying, Sternberg, on the, does not remove the option for a code variance. Code variance being, actually, I'd like some clarification on that, maybe I'm letting my ear and show the difference between a special review use and a code variance.
Oh, variance has, so, a special review use is an application, in the rest of the world, it's called a conditional use permit. I don't know why we use our term, but conditional use permit means you get a permit for the use that applies conditions. A variance says, yep, you know, the code says this, but due to certain conditions or circumstances, we don't think it should apply. And a variance is permanent, right? It goes with, it runs with the land. So, for instance, I'll just give you an example that's easy for me to pull out of my brain. So, Big R used to be, what was it, Alco? Alco. So Alco had a parking requirement of, oh, I think it was like a hundred slots, let's just say. And they didn't have big enough parking lot to have a hundred slots, so they came to the Board of Adjustments, son of variance, which they got, whether Monday night quarterback that agree with, doesn't matter. They got that variance, which they ran with the land, and so they only have to have seventy-six slots, which is hard to believe they have that, but they do. So when Big R bought the property, they're like, oh my God, we have to get a variance. Like, no, you already have a variance. They, their engineers or whatever did the parking calculation, they're like, it's this? You don't have that. It's like, you have a variance that runs with the land that says that that use is provided. So, but a conditional use permit, it'd be somebody else buys that and you go, well, these guys had a conditional use permit, and the city saw that as beneficial use, but the new business, maybe we want it, maybe we don't, it doesn't matter, let's say, well, you know, well, you ought to put up a bunch of stuff in that parking lot and make it even less, and no, you don't have a buy right, you have to come and get a permit for that.
And right now, the other zone districts are by right to have a religious institute in those zone districts. So, this is the current zone zoning map. This is commercial business, and then this darker color is commercial highway. These have been rezoned, so these are residential medium density. But this is your downtown district, and then this is all commercial highway along 160.
So as it stands right now, if somebody wanted to establish a church, which is, obviously, we've been through here recently, in the commercial district, it would still be, as I understand what you're saying, the same process of applying for a code variance?
Code variance is a much higher standard, though, counselor, it's not the same process.
Okay.
I mean, it is a much higher standard. If I put on my, my personal planner hat as a planner, the way I was taught, you almost never grant it. The city of Montevista has granted all kinds of variances that are, some of which are beyond comprehension that they did at the time, but they did. So, it's a subjective decision made by the Board of Adjustments.
So, pretty much, any, just saying, any residential home in this area, like, right now would be grandfathered in?
They, they are currently grandfathered. There's some difficulty in our zoning in that particular one for residential. You can take the, let's see what block is that, the 200, the 200 block of Adams Street, which is, there's like two residents on there, I think, maybe if you count the duplex, there's three. The rest of it's churches, which is fine, but, you know, but the houses are on there. We've had to do kind of conditional letters to lenders when people want to sell them because technically, under our zoning, and this is another thing of the thousand things we need to correct, that it's not necessarily grandfathered. Our code says in commercial business, the primary use has to be for business. You've got single-family residents on that, that's not for business, right? So technically, use is not grandfathered. It's kind of a conundrum, right? And we generally provide those letters to the lenders and the sellers and says, hey, we understand this, you know, this use is grandfathered. And then the issue also is what if that house burns down? Under our code, another thing that needs to be fixed, if that house actually burns down, you can't rebuild the house under our existing code, right? Because it has to, you have to rebuild a business, which is, certainly, then our codes were updated in 2009 at kind of a glaring error, the city on that part, so it's on our list of a lot of things to fix.
Well, I, all I can say is that I would be adamantly against any ordinance that, that makes it more difficult to have a temporary use permit, a code variance, as you, as you will, that would prohibit pretty much anybody from having a temporary use for a startup religious institution, which is, every place that I've lived, it's been pretty common. And to single that out, to say that, no, that's not going to be allowed, is, is not only unnecessary, it's, it's borderline discriminatory, so.
Well, I would also say, though, counselor, and I respect your opinion on this, but the federal law that imposes certain things on our communities now came after this concept of the SRU and essentially killed the city's ability to have self-determination on this issue. So, you know, that's an evolution that has happened that, you know, can you, can you actually make a SRU decision that is not controlled by the federal government or a charter community? You know, it kind of goes against the ability of you, the city council, and this community to have self-determination. So, you know.
I don't see how passing this ordinance gets us around a federal civil rights statute.
Well, according to both our SIRS attorneys, the remaining zones that we have are perfectly adequate to meet the federal law. So this action would not engender a lawsuit that would be successful because there are a number of options. You know, there are other totally unrelated church-type businesses that we highly regulate that only can exist in one zone, and that's found to be legal as long as you let them do that. I'm not going to talk about what kind of business that are. We talked about regulating marijuana shops, for instance. We had it down to a very, very, very high parameter in traffic regulations, which meets the intent of the law. I mean, I think we had like about two blocks in the whole town where those could exist.
Bottom line is, we are up here to represent our citizens. And we had a lot of citizens speak out, and we could not, under our current ordinances, represent them. And that reflected poorly on us, and it was a disservice to them. Therefore, it's time that we make things to such a way that if your neighbors don't want you, they don't have to have you there, just like the marijuana shops. We apparently don't want them. Our citizens don't want them. It doesn't matter what I want, it doesn't matter what Counselor Foster wants, Mayor Becker, Counselor Johnson, or Counselor Segala. It matters that we put ourselves in a position where we can represent our citizens in what they have struggled for.
And I believe that can be done under the, the current.
We just, we just had, it's a situation where it couldn't be.
Well, it easily could be, according to what we're just talking about with a code variance, the, I beg to differ about the marijuana shops. That's a very, very poor comparison.
Why is that a poor comparison?
We did not want that, we voted against having marijuana in the city.
That's fine.
We haven't voted against having churches.
This isn't voting against having a church. This right here just gets it where it's not in this area. And this should have been done by previous legal counsel cleared back from 2000, 2000, and it came through in 2000, and it should have been handled then. And it was not. We were poorly, poorly taken care of in that, the city. Not we here, but the city was poorly taken care of. This just gets it where there's two zones, that there's not going to be any, and any homes that are there are grandfathered in. So if you wanted to have something at your house, you're grandfathered in.
Assuming you could find enough off-street parking to have a church at your house, Mr. Johnson, the, I believe the requirement is that you're supposed to have three off-street parking spaces for every person that, or, excuse me, one off-street parking space for every three people that would be in attendance. So if you have fifteen people and you're attending your Bible study or your prayer service or whatever you wish to choose at your house, then you must provide, as I understand the rules for residential use, that you would have to provide then five off-street parking places. I know of exceedingly few places, few residences in Montevista that you could have more than ten people in a meeting and provide three off-street parking spaces. I don't see that churches are a threat to our, our commercial area. My sampling of citizens is much different than Counselor Locke's. I felt that I represented the citizens and the ones that I talked to.
They didn't actually show up and they didn't sign the petition, so all we have is, what do we have to say?
They sent letters, so it was more word than petition. And I feel that this move is a move to push churches farther out, and I'm with Counselor Johnson, and I think this is a really poor idea.
Seems like I remember our attorney telling us that we have, per capita, a large amount, if not more than, churches in Colorado. Therefore, I don't think we're in a shortage of churches. And I don't think we're trying to shut churches down. I'm certainly not trying to shut churches down. But even the Bible says there is a time and a place.
I, this makes getting, this makes opening up to slot, Counselor Johnson said, this makes starting a church more difficult. I don't see how you can say that you're not shutting churches down with that statement. I'm not following.
We have at this point at least two, if not three, churches that are closed. If you want to fill a church, go fill one of those. We have several other churches that are struggling with their congregation, struggling to get enough people to come. If you want to help a church, go help them grow. Nobody's trying to shut down a church.
Point of personal privilege, Mayor Locke's comments are out of line.
Would you explain to me that?
Your comment, go help a church that's struggling, I felt was insulting.
Why? Why would that be insulting?
I felt it was a personal attack.
I am so sorry that you felt that way, but I have no control over how you feel.
Well, I'll go point of order. We have a motion and a second on the floor. James?
Counselor Johnson?
Nay.
Counselor Foster?
Nay.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry, James.
Motion carries, three to one.
Or three to two, I'm sorry.
Okay, now we go to contracts, agreements, and leases. Optimistics contract.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a few questions, I know I provided you all with a memo, but, you know, I'd like to make a couple statements on behalf of these guys. I think this group of people is doing some really good stuff. It's really activating and doing those things. So that is awesome. I think the first question I had, though, is what are they asking for, to do with the $5,000? The messaging seemed a little confused. Did they need that to have them to hold as a bank for matches for grants, or did they want to spend it on physical stuff? You know, I mean, I think that's kind of a question. Not trying to say how the council, you want to roll that money or not, that's, but to me, the first question was, what's, what is the use of the funds?
Are they about to answer those questions now?
Well, yeah, at this point, yes, they, they can. Right now, in the, in the situation that we're in, obviously, we don't, we don't have funding. So, it is really our intent to get a hold of that money, hopefully the $5,000, and use it as a bank sort of.
and use it as a bank, so to speak, to apply for matching funds. Because what we found is any one of the any one of the grants that have been out there that we looked at required some sort of matching funds. And right now, we don't we don't have that. So I think that the the crane money, the sale of the crane money, is going to be used for, like for instance, the lighting. But we're hoping that XL will reimburse us for that. Because I've talked to them several times. We expect our light bulbs that they they approve. So once we buy them and put them up there, they will reimburse us for that. So, you know, we will be using that money. And I think really our plan is for this $5,000 to kind of be our our bank just to start looking for additional grants.
So thank you. I kind of thought that was what you were asking for, but I wanted to clarify that. So the staff recommendation to the council after hearing that and listening to the presentation and, you know, it's a really good community-based plan to start out with. The staff recommendation to the council and, you know, take it for what it's worth. Honestly, they need a match. So I think the recommendation of staff would be to write a funding commitment letter to the organization for $5,000, which then can be used. That's a match, but it's not an actual actual transfer of capital, right? So they would have that to create match. And then as they're getting grants, you're getting those grants going or whatever, there would be an opportunity to convert it into, you know, brick and mortar kind of stuff down the road. But initially, to get it going, they could have that funding commitment letter for the city.
And why would that be different than releasing the funds?
Well, councillor, I would like $5,000 today for unspecified expenses.
But they're not saying unspecified expenses here.
To have and hold the taxpayers' money in your bank. You know, we're not the federal government. Honestly, it's a little irregular for the city to give money to somebody that's not related to an actual expense, like when kids came in, they were doing the tree project. They needed $329.37 to buy trees or materials or whatever. So generally, the city's funds are allocated in a in a way that kind of creates brick and mortar. You know, if we're giving them $5,000 for match, we're kind of acting as a zero percent interest lender. We're saying, here's the money. We don't want the interest or anything for it and you can use it however you want. It's a pretty broad expenditure of taxpayer funds.
Isn't that money given through the tourism?
No, no, this is the city general fund money. They're not asking for the tourism board money. They're asking for community development money from the city's general fund. Initially, they asked for tourism money, which is a different pot of money we have set aside in the county, which is a tax money, but they're actually asking for money from the city's general fund.
I'm not that familiar with the funding grant situation, but if what you're describing is as strong in applying for matching funds and if the letter of commitment sounds like what you're talking about is strong enough, is people dealing with grants more than I do would agree that that, I see.
Councillor Johnson, if you'll recall, the Friends of Sky High are doing the same exact thing with funds that are pledged. They have letters of commitment in order to secure some of the other funds. A lot of their grants are based on, are you going to get this other money? Is this other money in your account or is it pledged? So basically, what the city is saying is that, yes, if they can get more grant funds, we will match the grant funds. That's basically what it is.
Right.
You know, and so again, a prime example of this is the Friends of Sky High and how they're working with their grant funders.
Good, that's good. The only reason it brings up is because of some other issues that you've mentioned. As a manager for the in dealing with some something similar to Sky High where the funds were either pledged or or you either had a letter of credit, in other words, which just sounds like what we're doing. As opposed to the money being there. Apparently, that's a little different structure and I understand that. I just wanted to clear that up.
Right, so essentially, it's a letter of credit or a funding commitment letter. Then if you like bond councils more, you can like loans, the same instrument, but it's basically says, we are committed for this purpose, you know, to provide this funding. You've got a nice letter that is by the city and for most funders, you know, when I worked on the other funding side, you know, on multifamily housing projects, you've got those commonly where, like Chaffa would say, hey, okay, we're we have a commitment of a million dollars to this project, right? But they didn't give the developer money until the project was being built. And they wanted your money as a piece and then they talked to somebody else, so. And then it gives these guys the ability to do this, which is great. And that money could they could come back to the council and say, look, we just got this grant for $50,000 because we have this and we want to spend 55. We'd like to spend that five now on this activity. And you guys would have the ability to approve that expenditure. But upfront, it would just be a letter.
Would that letter be sufficient as they're applying to their nonprofit or what is it, 501(c)(3)? And I'm not sure if I need to be asking you or you or but is that letter sufficient to help you get them up? Because it takes the IRS, from my understanding, about a year to approve.
You can, yeah.
Yeah.
Councillor, kind of two different things there.
Okay.
The the $5,000 even in a letter of commitment, my understanding is we can go after the grants and say, look here, we've got this, we've got that. You know, I'm not sure how it applies to us applying for a 501(c)(3). I'm not sure about that. But I know that, you know, we'd be more than happy to have a commitment so that we can say, hey, we have this from the city. We have the city in the loop with us. You know, so, you know, give us some more money.
Right, and the only other stipulation that the staff recommend is that because this is not an official entity, but they're partnering with the chamber. So when we do the commitment letter and when we have a copy of the MOU, the sign between the chamber and this group, then they're under the umbrella of the 501(c)(3) of the chamber and that kind of makes it all scotchy for our auditors as well because, you know, they're heading soon.
As the as the chamber liaison, I will tell you, this was voted on at the last chamber meeting and approved pending an attorney simply looking over the MOU and making sure it was all okay. They they just want to make sure the wording is right.
Right, and that's what I heard today as well. So if the city had a copy of the MOU, a trade document, and if you all choose to read it.
We just pass papers around and then you can.
So we need a motion.
We need some legislation for.
A motion for what exactly?
A letter of credit would be issued to the optimistics in the amount of $5,000 to foster grant opportunities. That's all I got.
Second.
Second.
Then we've been seconded to approve the letter to foster grants for the optimistics. The $5,000, is there any more discussion? James?
Councillor Foster?
Aye.
Councillor Segala?
Aye.
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
Councillor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, councillor. Nice job, folks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, now that you opened up that door, I just want to say something very quickly regarding your presentation. I've talked to to you and and gone through some of your details and things and nowhere did it ever get as in-depth as this. And I am very impressed with what you brought up and what you set out to do. And actually, you know, your plans are great, but what's even more important is what you've accomplished already. So congratulations.
Good job, guys. Jen, financial report?
Can you all see this if I stand here or do you want me to stand off to the side?
We've got it.
I'll have boots and coat on, that's fine.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. This evening, I wanted to come before you and kind of give a economic update as it pertains to the city of Montevista, the state of Colorado, and kind of nationwide. As it kind of seems, there's some new things out there that economists are talking about. We are seeing some new different trends and economists are kind of catching up to what we predicted at the beginning of the year. So it's kind of nice to see that, you know, I I do sometimes know what I'm talking about. So this evening, I wanted to start out with a term that's been thrown out in the media quite a bit. And economists, news outlets, everybody is talking about the economy recovering in a K shape. You know, you hear the Nike swish, you hear the V, you hear the 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 root sign. You hear all these different ones and the K shape was kind of a new one. And so I thought it'd be maybe helpful to talk about what a K shape is. So a K shape literally is what it sounds like. It's comparing two different markets in an economy or or different sectors in an economy and comparing the two along. So in our recovery right now, you can see that at the beginning of the year in technology, retail, and software services, which is the blue line, and the orange line is industries needing assistance such as travel, entertainment, hospitality, and food services. At the beginning of the year, both of those markets were together. And then COVID hit and both of those markets tumbled. Okay, now what we're seeing is, you know, the technology sector is booming because people are working from home. We need computers, we need networking. We need all of that capability to work at home. So people, businesses, individuals are out there buying all this tech equipment, buying upgraded software, getting internet boosts, things like that. So that market is starting to make a good recovery and it's coming back. And while we know that our service industries, such as travel, entertainment, hospitality, and those things, they're not doing so well because they can't come back at full capacity. So we're seeing a split in those two markets and so that's basically what a K shape recovery looks like. They were together, they met at a point, and then they're now they're going, they're moving apart separately. So that's to answer, you know, any questions that might be around a K shape recovery. In Colorado, the jobless claims by industry, the biggest ones continue to be in hospitality and food services. So what this graph shows is that the red line was the the peak point at which jobs were lost in those different industries. So you can see that nationwide, there was roughly between 50,000 to 60,000 jobs that were lost in just the food service industry and accommodations. The tan line is basically where it was at in September. So, you know, we all know that the unemployment claims are going down. Some people are headed back to work. They're able to open up a little bit. So we're starting to see that the jobless claims are going down. They're not where they want them to be, obviously, but but things are starting to look on the up. So what this graph shows is Colorado's employment growth. So you can see from 2006 to 2008, we were doing pretty good. Jobs were were somewhat booming and then, you know, the recession hit of 2008 to 2012. So we lost a lot of jobs in Colorado. And then we started to bounce back and we were doing really good, just like the rest of the nation. Everything was at an all-time low for unemployment rates and then 2020 hit. So you can see there that in 2020, we lost more jobs than we did in 2009. So obviously, what we're going through right now, in some ways, as far as the job market goes, is worse than what it was in 2009. Now, other industries are doing good. You know, it just depends on which market you're in and how well you're going to do with that. So Colorado's unemployment, this is through September 2020 compared to the national average. In Colorado, the unemployment rate as of September was 6.2%. The national average in September was 7.49 or 7.9, sorry. So Colorado is trending below the national average, which is is a plus for our economy, our local economy. This map here shows what the unemployment rate is by county. So, you know, obviously, your heavier density populations, they're going to experience more unemployment. And also, your towns like Vail, Aspen, which you've got Breckenridge, all of that is up in the Summit County area. They're they're struggling bad. And so right now, most of the counties in Rio Grande or sorry, most of the counties in the San Luis Valley are anywhere between 4% to 6% as unemployment. So some counties are below the state average, some counties are right at the state average. Rio Grande County right now is trending towards the upper end of unemployment rates. They're between 6% and below 8%. So they're not quite, they're not quite doing as good as we would hope for our local community. But valley-wide, you know, the the valley seems to be holding strong for the most part, considering everything. Some of those counties that are doing really well are the ones that are in red. Those counties are not really based in in heavy tourism. They're based more in agriculture and as we know, agriculture did really well. The valley has the valley has a mixed market. You know, we have we have industries of all types. And as you know, agricultural employment is a little bit different. It's tracked a little bit different than, you know, retail jobs and things like that. So the next slide is is broken out into how the leisure and hospitality is affecting different counties within the state of Colorado. So again, you know, while Rio Grande County doesn't have, it isn't 100% based in tourism like up in Grand County, Summit County, and those counties that that rely heavily on tourists to be here, that's part, that's a large part of where their unemployment factors are coming in and why those counties were so much higher than than counties that don't depend on that, that have different industries, that have different opportunities for their citizens. So employment growth, if you work in in the federal government, you're doing pretty good. If you work in finance, you're good. Okay, sorry. But the rest of the industries, unfortunately, are still struggling as of September. This is compared to September of last year. So it's what they call a year-over-year, year-over-year comparison. So once again, we're seeing that there's significant job loss and and not a lot of job growth in the arts and entertainment industries. So what does the recovery time look like for something like this? You know, there for a long time, the United States was at an all-time low for unemployment rates. In less than a year, we've seen an all-time low and we've seen an all-time high. So economists are trying to look and see, you know, how long is it going to take us and and take our economy to bounce back from this significant job loss? So if we look back in the 1940s for for what they experienced from the peak to the trough of unemployment, it took roughly 18 months to recover from that. If we take a look at the 2007 to 2009 recession, it took almost 80 months for the economy to come back from that. Now, as you saw in the previous slides, our our job loss claim is 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 way more significant than what it was in 2007, 2008. So it's going to take our economy a little bit longer to come back from this, probably, than what we've seen, what we saw in 2007. I think we all can kind of remember what it was like then. It's it's going to be tough, but, you know, the way I've looked at it this year is everybody's having a hard time predicting what's going to happen. It could go one of two ways. It could be past 80 months for a recovery. We could be looking at 40 months for a recovery. In the job market, you know, it's it's one of those unknown things right now that we really don't know how long it's going to take the nation or the state of Colorado or even us locally to recover from this. So this is one of the one of the things that I found really interesting because it kind of goes hand in hand, or it really does go hand in hand, with what the city of Montevista has done over the last year with their employees and with our new wage study and our and our reviews for our employees. So if you guys will remember, one of the key components of our wage study and one of the driving factors behind giving our employees raises and compensating them was to create a job force and a workforce that is highly skilled, highly trained. was to create a job force and a workforce that is highly skilled, highly trained in each one of their professions. So, you know, we kind of, I kind of look at us as being forward thinking because even before this slide came out, the city of Montevista already took into the, into account that we wanted to create a better workforce for our citizens. Because if we employ good people, we're going to be able to serve our citizens better. And we're going to be able to give our employees a way of life that's better than maybe some other people. So what this slide is talking about here is the percent change from January 2020 through July. And it's, it's looked at by wage group. So we know that, we know for a fact that the industries that have hurt the most are the food services. Well, those are a little bit lower paying jobs. It, it's just a fact of life that, that wait staff, bussing, all of that kind of stuff is going to get paid less than a college educated person who's working in a field that they majored in. And then, so we can see here from, from that low, this low dip right here, those are people who earn less than 50,000 a year in income. The next one that we see here is middle income earners. They weren't hit as hard as the low income was. And then we have the high income earners who earn more than 85,000 a year. Not many of them lost their jobs. And so what I found interesting with this and when I set in on this presentation is economists and business thinkers and Forbes and all of those are now taking a step back and saying, okay, what do we need to do to create a higher skilled workforce? So that we have less people earning in those low incomes and we're able to provide them with the skills, the knowledge, the certifications and things that they need in order to not only be successful and be employable, but to provide a good, good way of life for their families. So I, I really liked this and really wanted to, to bring this to the forefront because council was instrumental in adopting our new wage scale and our new way of thinking for employee reviews and, and really backed what we wanted to do there. So that's why I kind of wanted to spend a little bit of time on this was because, you know, we, we do have great staff here that is, is working for the betterment of not just the, the citizens of the city of Montevista, but also its employees and what we can contribute as employees back to the city by being, by being highly skilled and trained employees. So switching gears, I kind of want to talk about sales tax and where that's headed because that is a driving factor on what we can do and how we compare employees and what we can do for the citizens. So you can see over the, over the past roughly 15 years, this is the national retail and food service sales, has, has been at a constant growth. Until about 2020. And then once again, everything got shut down. We saw a huge dip. But even with that huge dip, we're at roughly almost 4% growth from September, from the, from the last peak and trough to where we're at now. Sales are still increasing at 4%. So we're slowly but surely coming back from the pandemic. Colorado sales and use taxes. So we don't deal much with use tax here in the city, but we do deal with the sales tax. As you guys know, that's our biggest revenue generator for the general fund. Colorado sales tax as a whole is down 0.6% from September of last year. So when you take that into consideration, sales tax isn't even down 1% from what it was last year. Now, the city of Montevista is seeing that we're roughly 15, as of July, we were roughly 15% above sales tax revenue from this year to last year. We haven't lost any revenue from sales tax. So it kind of coincides. I had the opportunity to attend a meeting for Southern Colorado counties. And it was very interesting because a lot of the other people that were there representing different cities and towns were, were definitely seeing the same thing that we're seeing and even more so. One of the individuals that we talked to, or that I talked to, had, their city was seeing a 34% increase in sales tax. So this is looking at the state as a whole and it's not just taking into consideration our area or Denver or Springs or Vale or whatever. So I, I think this is a really good indicator and we still aren't, you know, you can see in 2010 and 2012 where it was super low. State of Colorado is continually seeing a growth in sales tax. Colorado small businesses obviously have probably been hit the hardest from this. We can see that at the beginning of the year, our, our businesses that were open, that were a small business was trending a little bit above and then we had a drop. We caught wind of what was going to happen and small businesses had to shut down. So again, they were, they were affected the heaviest from this. They've made about a 50, they've come back about 50% from what they've lost. So the lowest point that they lost, they were around 45% of small businesses were, were closed. About 25% of those are back open. So they're, they're gaining, but it's probably not as quickly as we would like to see. So the small business outlook, I, I like this because the business conditions or the economic conditions versus what economists thought was going to happen are a whole lot better than what they thought were going to happen. So, so we'll take that as a win. This chart on this side shows what the business, business conditions for small businesses are. This one shows what they were predicting or what they thought happened. So you can see that the, on the left side, it's a lot better than what the right side was. National retail sales from September of 2020 compared to September of 2019. They've seen a huge jump in building materials, gardening equipment, sporting goods equipment. People are home and they need something to do. So a lot of people are investing in their, in their home. They're investing in recreation equipment that they can do because they either can't go to the gym or they, you know, they want to be in the great outdoors. So those, those economies have seen growth in their retail sales. While we continue to see losses in, in things like food services, accessories, clothing, that type of stuff. So a lot of things are related to the driving force behind sales tax revenues. And one of them is the consumer confidence. And, and we all know that that's basically, what is the consumer willing to, one, spend their, their disposable income on? And two, how much of that are they going to spend? So again, this correlates very closely to the previous slides of, of the small businesses being open. So once again, the actual confidence versus what they're thinking is, is better. Consumer confidence is, is going back up. It's not where it was a year ago. It's not where, where we would like it to be. But the mountain region is, is, was trending higher than the United States. It's starting to make a comeback, but it's still trending a little bit lower than what the United States is. E-commerce, this is really going to be the key for these small businesses, big businesses. It's going to be their ability to, can we set up that online store? Can we ship? Can we get this out there? Because the brick and mortar right now isn't doing so well. You know, if, if you're a big box store like Walmart or Safeway or something like that and you can remain open, great, you're, you're doing just fine either way. But if you have a small business that's a boutique and you don't have a website and you can't allow people to shop online, you're going to miss out. It's really important for small businesses, big businesses, whatever it is, to start shifting and start thinking outside of that storefront box. That, yeah, it's great to have that because you're always going to have people who want to come or, and try on clothes or try on shoes because they just don't want to order something that they don't know about. But in order for businesses to continue to be sustained, they're going to have to think about e-commerce. Because as you can see here, the, the retail with brick and mortar for the last few years has been trending below e-commerce. And now, because that's all people can do, that's what we've come back to. And that age old saying of history repeats itself, we're, we're living in it. Because even though it was before my time, how did people in the olden days get what they wanted? They shopped by catalog, you know? And I barely remember the JCPenney's Christmas catalog. That was like the best thing that ever came. You would get that thing in the mail and you would start marking pages and you'd be like, Mom, this is what I want for Christmas, you know? So Mom would get on the phone and she'd call up JCPenney's and they, she would give them an order number. And oh, lo and behold, Christmas morning, there was Barbie's Dream House. So, you know, it is going to repeat itself, yeah. Well, we don't see the catalogs and we don't have the pages to mark. You could put it in your cart and be like, hey Mom, check out my Amazon cart. This is what I want for Christmas. So we're definitely headed back that way. It's just in digital form. And so it's going to be really important for businesses to start thinking about that and start marketing a website and start being able to allow their customers to shop online. Okay, so this goes back to something else that we talked about at the beginning of the year that we were, we were keeping a close eye on is when, what's going to affect our sales tax. And one of the things that we said at the beginning of the year that we wanted to watch very closely what our expenditures were going to be because we didn't know what sales tax was going to do because we didn't know what type of income people were going to have. So at the beginning of the year, people have the stimulus package, they have their income tax refund, and a lot of people have their credit cards, okay? Well, now economists are starting to get worried about some of the debt that's out there and, and people's ability to purchase things. So what this graph shows, and I want to draw your attention to the credit card, is this shows what the debt is represented by things, by different debt, debt services that are 90 days delinquent, okay? So we can see here at the end of the chart on the red line that people are falling behind on their credit card payments. That credit card debt that is 90 days or older is starting to creep up. The black line is student loans. Now, we all know that the Fed's froze the student loans and they're not making people pay those back. So that's why there's a sharp drop there. But the other debt, which is like, you know, payday loans, things like that, quick cash things, that's all on the rise. And so that's something that we're keeping a close eye on, that we were afraid of at the beginning of the year, is what's going to be people's available income, ability to spend the money. You know, unemployment is going down, but those numbers are still really high. There's been changes to the unemployment tax. We don't know if there's going to be another stimulus package. We don't know how many people are going to actually get to go back to work and work a full 80 hours for two weeks. So that's something that, you know, we're going to have to keep an eye on. And when I gave my last council report, we, we, I stated that we'll probably see a decrease in sales tax towards the end of the year. And that's definitely what we're planning on and preparing for. Whether that may happen or not, I don't know because again, this is the year of unpredictability. I don't know what's going to happen, but we're going to err on the side of caution to ensure that we have enough reserves, we have enough income to continue to operate the city. But again, it's going to go back to, you know, how do we plan for 2021? When's the pandemic going to be over? How are we going to handle this? So that brings me into my next slide of tailwinds, headwinds and the unknowns. So the tailwinds are the things that are kind of behind us and now they're coming back and, and it's pushing the economy forward. So we're seeing an increase in gross, gross domestic product. We're seeing an increase in employment. Our unemployment rates are going down. Retail sales are starting to go up or have really gone up because of e-commerce. Bio-pharma, that's going to, that's going to pertain to the vaccine. We know they're getting, getting really close to a vaccine. And agriculture. Agriculture sustained this nation through the shutdown. It was a key component. Kept a lot of people in jobs. It kept everybody fed. They didn't shut down the trucks. Our, our nation was still able to deliver products. Our headwinds and the things that we're still going to struggle with and have a hard time with is, is COVID-19. We don't know how long it's going to last and we don't know, there's still a lot of unknowns. Now, we're getting closer to, to finding a vaccine, but we don't know what, what it's going to look like or what the timeline is for that. Tourism is still a big thing, you know? It, it drives a lot of communities, especially in Colorado. You know, we, people just aren't coming to the state. Now, there was some people that were brave and went ahead and came and, and that saved a lot of other businesses that it may not have. Government stimulus. We don't know if there's going to be another government stimulus. And if, if we do see one, chances are it's probably not going to happen in 2021. It will happen in 20, or excuse me, it's not going to happen in 2020, it'll happen in 2021. Events and conventions, you know, we've talked about that a lot. We are going to be highly affected by that because we're building a beautiful event center and conference center. And we don't know if we're going to get to fill it. We don't know if we're going to get to host those conferences. A lot of our, a lot of our conferences and events that we had planned have been canceled. And even the ones that were planned for 2021 have been canceled or been modified. So, you know, we're not the only ones that this is a concern on, but it is definitely going to affect and impact this community. Personal income, you know, we don't know how many people are going to get to go back to work. We don't know how long the unemployment benefits are going to stay where they're at. Are they going to go up? Are they going to go down? You know, and, and again, personal income is going to drive the consumer confidence and it's going to drive, are you going to be willing to buy, you know, can you buy a new outfit this month? Or is it just going to be groceries, you know? And, and the disposable income is the stuff that boosts the economy above and beyond the need. Another big, huge thing that's going to face the entire nation is going to be the riots and the protests. You know, there's, there's a lot of, lot of upset in this country. There's a lot of division in this country. You know, we're fortunate, we don't see it as bad as some of the big cities, but that's costing the big cities a lot of money to clean up the mess from these things. And higher education, higher education kind of falls in a couple of categories. It, it's definitely a headwind and it's definitely an unknown. Colleges have had to change the way they think, you know? And that's going to change, change the way that, that students go to college. Are they going to be willing to do this online or are they totally there to be on campus? It, it just kind of depends that, you know, it also depends on is that college private? Is it public? Is it government funded? Is it state funded? Is it, you know, paid for 100% privately? So, and then, so that leads us into our unknowns, you know? Again, it goes back to the pandemic. We don't know how long it's going to last. We don't know when it's going to be over. We don't know how severe it's going to be. The election, if anybody knows exactly who our president is going to be, please raise your hand because I'm curious. I don't know. You know, and, and we're probably, you know, yeah, the votes may come in by tomorrow morning, but that doesn't mean it's going to be accepted and that's going to be the end of it, you know? So it, who knows when we'll know who our president is? The vaccine, again, I think the vaccine is going to have a huge impact on our economy because that, whether it works or doesn't work, there's going to be, it's going to be a security blanket for people. It's going to be, okay, I got my vaccine, I can go out in public. Or you're going to either not get your vaccine and stay home because you don't believe in vaccines. And probably the biggest factor or the hardest thing to predict is human behavior, behavior. You know, humans have their own free choice, their own free will, and nobody knows what anybody's going to do. Real estate continues to be an unknown. Real estate's doing really well this year in the residential sector. Now, commercial property, not so good because people are finding out, businesses are finding out that they don't need those big office spaces. They don't need as many places as they thought they needed because a lot of people can work from home. So they're not going to pay for those leases. They're not going to buy that commercial space because it's not a necessity anymore and they found that, that they can still operate. So, you know, we've seen a huge increase in housing sales, but, you know, the commercial property has gone down. So real estate's going to play, play a huge role in it. Productivity, again, that goes back to are we able to put people back to work? Are we able to put them in the factories? Are we able to, to produce products for people to buy? Again, higher education and then, like I said, work from home. That's on a huge rise and that's going to affect, again, commercial property. It's going to affect, you know, are people working as hard at home? Are they happier at home? So they're producing more. That, those are just things that time will tell and we'll have to wait and see what happens there. So how does this all pertain to the city of Montevista and the finance department? So sales tax, like I said, continues to be on the rise for this year. We're definitely coming in a little bit over what we did last year. But it's starting to slow. If you'll remember at the beginning of the year, January was a phenomenal month. February, I don't know what happened there, but it, it fell way down low. We were only at 75% of what we thought we would be. So between January, January and February, what February, what January had gained, February wiped out. So it was a wash. But from there on out, we, we saw a 16% increase, 17% increase, and now we're down to 15%. So like I said, we're, we're preparing for sales taxes to taper off at the end of the year. Something else that the city has done is we've started a utilities hardship fund for members of the community who are struggling to pay their water and sewer bills. Can go out to our website, they can call City Hall. We have an application for them to apply for funding to help pay, pay their water and sewer bills. And, and this is backed by funding from the CARES Act. So what will happen is, is we, they will make an application. So what will happen is, is we, they will make an application, it gets reviewed, it's subject to audit, and if it's approved, then it gets applied to the city's water and sewer accounts, and, and we're hoping that that will relieve some pressure and stress from members of our community that are struggling to make their, make their payment on their water and sewer bills. We're continuing to monitor our budget versus our actual revenues and expenditures. We're not just looking at the revenue side, we're looking at the expenditure side because you can't have one without the other. And then, my favorite, auditors are scheduled to be here in the building November thirtieth through December second to do their interim audit work. And what they are going to be looking at while they're here is the utility billing, check registers and processing, so that's our accounts payable. They're going to be taking a look at our employee files as well as our payroll. So those are the things that, you know, we're getting prepared for them to be here on November thirtieth for. We're continuing to hear from the FOMC that, that interest rates are going to stay at zero or near zero at least until 2023. There hasn't been any change in that. Weaker demand and lower oil prices are holding down inflation. We're obviously not going to see a huge jump in inflation. We're not going to see, hopefully, a huge price, price increase on products or cost of living. Now, I am a little bit frustrated because the Valley continues to see much higher gas prices than many other places. It was up north on the Front Range earlier this week, and gas was a dollar seventy-five a gallon, so it only cost twelve bucks to fill my car up entirely. So it's a little disheartening to see that when I come back here, it's almost sixty, seventy cents higher than what it is up north. So, and then, the path of the economy will depend significantly on the cause of the virus. You know, it's going to continue to play a huge role in people's ability to get back to work, you know, in all industries. It, it's going to take everybody to bring, bring the economy back to what it was before. The ongoing public health crisis will continue to weigh on economic activity, employment, and inflation in the near future. So, with that, does anybody have any questions?
No.
No? Good.
Actually, I did, well, I guess, mention, you did cover that at the end here about the difference between the Valley and the rest of the state, and that's, maybe we take some heart in the fact that we haven't been hit as hard, it's just like the recovery of oh eight and oh nine and that same kind of thing, which on a graph scale hardly shows it all, but, and so I'm, I'm believing with you that we're, we're going to be fine, but other than that, very, very good. I had no idea what the case thing was. I knew that, you know, I'm okay now.
All right, well, there you go. You can go tell everybody, hey, I'm.
I just want to say thank you. I'm very grateful to live in a city that had good foresight and, and went after the CARES Act and went after that funding to take care of some of the citizens that, that do need help. Any one of us could be one of those citizens that needs help at any time. So, thank you for, for, thank you staff for going after that.
I was going to say, it was a team effort, so.
Yeah, thanks, but thanks for going after that so that they can, can do something. Appreciate that.
All right.
Thanks, Jenny. Sitting here. I don't have a microphone, so. Do voices instead. Well, I can do some voices. Yeah, I don't need puppets.
We have someone here that does puppets, but, so I would, we have someone here that does puppets quite well, so I wouldn't want to go there, just be embarrassing. Okay, good evening, councilors, mayor. Oh, where do I start? So I did my typical random drawing stuff that's not in your packet. So Jenny didn't mention the Montevista Utilities Hardship Fund that closes November fifteenth. Why so soon? Because the way CARES is set up, basically, the program runs out December thirty-first, and, you know, the county is facilitating this, so we've got to get our stuff together, get the reporting to them, and they got to send it to the state, et cetera, et cetera. It's kind of like a mad rush. Also, in the mad rush thing, sometime in the next week or so, maybe at this week, or probably Monday or Tuesday, I talked about Upper Rio Grande Economic Development for a while, but, which I'm the chairman of, or whatever, we're actually participating with Rio Grande County and First Southwest Foundation in doing a business assistance program with CARES Act funds. So, kind of, I haven't seen the whole program yet, but it's supposed to be streamlined application to help businesses that were affected by COVID, right? So hopefully, it's as streamlined as I was told, but it's going to be a really short turnaround, like by November twenty-fourth, twenty-eight, something like that. Because they have to do the same thing, get the, you know, get the things in, make payments, you know, send the stuff to county. Anyway, it's going to be quite interesting, but I really applaud the county for getting that together. You know, they do have an interim county administrator now. Any of you, some of you might remember Judy Agbert, formerly the city clerk of Alamosa, worked as an interim here after that, she generally does consulting. They also have candidates for county administrator. I don't know how that's going. I get to touch base with them on Zoom meetings often enough. The county commissioners did waive sixty-nine hundred dollars in change of the building permit fees for Sky High, so out of the twenty-seven thousand dollars there, it was about sixty-nine hundred dollars, sixty-nine, twenty-nine, something like that, which still was generous. You know, didn't hurt to ask, but there's a lot of inspections on the part of their department as well. And, you know, the building department is, kind of going back to some stuff Jenny was talking about, building is crazy. Try to get a contractor tomorrow. Good luck with that. They're busy, there's stuff going on. You know, both the bigger contractors and some of the smaller ones, and I know you talk to them, they're like, oh, yeah, well, I could look at that for you in April, because they're booked out, which is great, right? Lumberyards is doing well, contractors are doing well, people are doing a lot of things. So, you know, the economy is just an interesting place to be in right now. We're all in it. We'll see as we keep, keep collecting taxes, how they go, but there is a feeling that it's slowing down a little bit, but obviously, we're going to end up the year pretty well. Talked about that. Just a couple of things, I'm sure you guys are like, really on things, but DDA, Downtown Development District or Association, and I don't know if you talked to Colorado Main Street at all. So Colorado Main Street might be right in the bailiwick, and, and that could be something you could work on the city with as well. Because the stuff you're doing, I worked on Main Street in Wyoming, you're like, doing some better things than that than what we did there, but it's in that wheelhouse, so that might be a good, it's a funding source. So I'd be happy to talk to you guys about that, but anything we can do to help. City had a Main Street program in the past, didn't all exactly work, but you guys are generating some, some partnerships, and that was one of the problems, is that got launched without the, you know, the cart was in front of the horse, that doesn't always work so well. Let's see. Sky High Project, if you haven't driven by there to see the framing, it is impressive. The framing's not even half done, so it's quite the, quite the building. We continue to work on it, we have subcommittees now, mayor's participating in part of that, and, you know, we're just trying to keep everything like, marching along, and it is, it's doing really well. We're in the, the part of the project that, other things that I've built that were really expensive, we get the part of the project, we're trying to figure out the last little things, does this work? Does this not work? And, and that can be a little contentious at times, and also, just getting cost numbers right now are difficult. How many hurricanes have hit the United States this?
I think about one hundred and sixty-two now.
Well, at least eight named storms, right? But what that does is, if, we're in a pandemic, there's somewhat, and there's all this building going on, right? But those areas get hit, and if you think back to Katrina and some of those other awful ones, those are single events. We have a cumulative event, the building supplies are going to be getting pricey, just market demand. You know, lumber is an issue right now, generally, it was an issue before that, and it's getting better. So, thank God, we're building a steel building with American Steel, so that helps, right? But some of the materials that we have stacked in there are, again, they're difficult to get, or, you know? But anyway, working on it, it's going forward, it's just, you know, it's a challenge, which we knew it would be, right? The other thing I have on here, which I didn't have in my memo, I would like to ask the council's permission not to attend the council meeting on the nineteenth of November, thinking about taking a little vacation time, so if that's all okay with you guys, I will.
Is that just a head nod?
Yeah, a head nod, if that's okay.
Depends on where you're going, where you're going.
Not, not far away. To the mountains, Gary.
Okay.
That far away, okay.
I'll get the approval notification.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, is that okay?
I haven't got it yet.
All right, thank you. That's about all I have. You know, I, and just Michael left, and the chief's not here this evening, but Police Department is doing some really awesome stuff right now, which hopefully, maybe I'll probably miss the meeting when chief tells you about that, but they've been doing some really effective things in partnership with other agencies, which is great, you know, including some feds. So when you get the feds involved and stuff you're working on, like I say, is that the things speed up really nicely. They have access to resources that, stuff that takes us three months to do, they can do in a day or two. So the chief's doing a great job, our officers are doing a great job, you know, our investigators, Michael is one of them, and we have a couple other officers that are doing things that they're really getting good at doing, and so I don't have, you know, crime stats, hopefully we'll have the next one, but hopefully, the chief will be able to share some of this either next meeting or at the December one, but let me just say that, let's see, old slogan, I think our police department's taking a bite out of crime right now, so. Sorry, couldn't resist.
Easy, Gruff.
I know. All right, so I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, otherwise, that's all I have. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Worth. Hi, me.
All right, my report's really, really short.
So I'm going to try to stretch as much as I can. Good evening. Interesting meeting, and interesting times that we're living, and interesting elections. So, as you remember, last report I did, we were in the season of football and volleyball, and we just finished with our football season. The last game that we hosted here in Montevista was on October seventeenth. Everything went well. The last volleyball games that we hosted here in Montevista were in November seventh, that's when we finished our seasons, and we had no issues with anybody getting sick or even complaining that they were getting sick. So whatever we're doing, we're doing okay. We had another basketball, youth basketball camp planned for October twenty-third, but the instructor that was going to help us put the camp together had some family emergencies, and he had to leave the state, and so we are still planning on when to reschedule that. So far, we had, we have fifty-two kids registered at this time, so. We are still planning on our cornhole tournament for November twenty-first. This is open for anybody ages thirteen and up, and again, the reason we did that age is just to have father, son, daughter, mother, daughter, son, you know, it, it doesn't matter just to have families together and kind of come and play a little bit of cornhole. Depends on the weather. If it's, the weather's nice, we're going to have it at the park. If it's a little bit cold, windy, then we're going over to the middle school gym, and we'll have it there. We purchased some cornhole things from a local family here in Montevista. Him and his family, his kids made them scratch for us, and actually have them in the office. I was going to bring them, but they're a little bit heavy, and they're, they come up pretty nice. It has our Montevista rec logo and everything, so they look nice. Let's see. We also still planning on a adult volleyball league. If everything, you know, with COVID-19 goes to, okay, we're still planning on doing that. I don't know, we're thinking more towards the, it's, it's hard to say, but we're thinking more towards like December. Hopefully, we could get at least two weeks, you know, playing some volleyball. And then, last but not least, you know, I just want to thank everybody, our coaches, our volunteer coaches, our officials, everybody that helps with this event, especially in these times, you know, it's very hard to get people. Kids are coming out, our number's still kind of low, but they are coming out, and especially fifth and sixth graders. We still have a little bit of problems with the third and four, the younger ones, to, you know, to get enough to get teams going, but I think eventually it'll start picking up. We are, we have registrations open for basketball right now, girls' basketball. We will be starting that the first week of December, and we'll, we'll play the whole, almost the whole month of December, and then in January, we'll start with the boys' season. Kim, my assistant, she's actually working right now in collecting all the football equipment, volleyball equipment from the season that we just finished, and then, at the same time, getting prepared for uniforms for basketball season. Let's see. Last week, we started working on the ice skating rink. We started getting the railroad ties set up and the liner, and I want to thank Counselor Johnson for stopping by and helping me with that, because I thought I was like, I thought I was thirty-five again, and I could move those railroads by myself, and after two, I needed about thirty minutes break. Yeah, so he showed up, and we were able to, you know, drag him and get him and set him up and put the old liner on top, and we just kind of have it set up, and I think next week, we're going to, I'm going to go over and put the new liner on top and start filling it up, and hopefully, we have an ice skating rink for this, for the community.
He worked two grandpa's for you?
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's better than one, that's for sure. And again, last but not least, again, thank everybody for, you know, for the help, and thank you guys for supporting the rec program to reopen and, you know, and get these kids out there and get them going. I know I go crazy at home doing nothing. I know that these kids have a lot of energy, and they just, they go crazy at home, and parents go crazy with it, because they can't handle them sometimes, so I'm sure. So that's all I have. If you guys have any questions for me or want to answer.
I appreciate what you do. Counselor Johnson, just this week, reminded me exactly how busy you are and how hard you work, and you're an unsung hero, because you do it, you don't say anything, you know, you know it, you're just out there doing it.
I enjoy what I do.
So I appreciate, I appreciate what you do, and I thank you, Counselor Johnson, for pointing that out to me. Tell me about the ice skating rink. I didn't have any clue.
It was fun.
In a time you want to come out and help with the next state, that's right.
Yeah, I'll come out there, help y'all move vlogs.
Right on, it's got to. That should be open by Thanksgiving, probably the week before.
If it stays cool. Crisis by then, yeah.
Well, that's the plan.
If it stays cold.
We're gauging it all on the, on the weather.
And hopefully, by next year, we'll probably have a person that would like to donate a nice set, that we don't have to move those railroad ties. That would be nice, and we're praying and hoping that he will.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Council committee, city commission, and council reports. Martin will start with me tonight.
You have to start with me. No, 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 I'm not, I'm not on it.
I want to just, I want this to be encouraging, no matter who's in the White House, we're still Montevista. We're still San Luis Valley. We still have the same vibrance, the same uniqueness, the same challenges, that doesn't change. We may need to start watching our water a little more closely, so, you know, don't let the flowers in your buttermilk distract you from, from that, possible problem coming up, um, because we need our water, we're in agricultural valley. So just, I just wanna encourage and encourage you to enjoy the upcoming holidays. We've had enough politics, we've done all we can do, we have cast our votes, we have helped our candidates, we've, we've done every, we've done it. It's out of our hands now, so let's enjoy our holidays, let's don't politicize anything anymore. We need to get back to, let's remember who our neighbors are, our family is, who our community is, and just enjoy the, the holidays and the end of the year, and let's hope that twenty-twenty-one is better. Or if it's not better, at least we got really good training this year, we can handle it better. So that's all I have to say, thank you, I appreciate it. Appreciate the time. Done.
Thanks, Martha. Victor, gonna jump around.
I just, I wanna thank the police department. I live in Mariah, you know, and, and anybody guys know about Mariah? I, uh, the other day I walked out of my house, I heard, "Come out with your hands up." I was like, you know, and, uh, and I, we're already leaving, and so I jumped in the car, and we went around the block, and sure enough, all the cops were just like a block down, and I was like, yes. Cause like, I, you know, I walk around a lot, I've been still walking around, and, and, uh, there's people that I recognize that are up to bad, you know? And I think to myself, man, uh, like, he's making not just me uncomfortable, but he makes, you know, members of the neighborhood uncomfortable. People have come to my house and said, "These people next door to me," and I'm like, oh, man. I know who exactly they're talking about, people on the community, the Facebook community awareness page, talking about these people, and I'm like, man. So whenever I pass by, I see the cops, and I'm like, you know, so I really wanted to applaud them, you know, um, they, they do keep, help keep our streets safe, keep our kids safe, and I just can't express that enough, you know, because, uh, when we're at home thinking like, oh, our kids are being good kids, sometimes they're not being good kids. So we, we definitely need them on patrol, so, um, and then just, uh, you know, keep an eye on your neighbors. Uh, there's definitely people out there that are up to no good, so, uh, just keep an eye out. I was on my way to wa- walking, uh, walking across town, and somebody started talking to me in the middle of the night, you know what I mean? Like, not in the middle of the night, maybe nine o'clock, and, and, uh, he told me his name was Suspect, because he asked me who my name was, so I told him who I was, and I told him, "Well, what's your name?" And he's like, "Suspect." And I go, "Oh, you don't wanna talk to me?" He's got a big ol' stick, I said, "Then you call the cops, you can talk to them," you know? They're out there, you know what I mean, so just hear your, hear the dogs barking, just peek outside, because that's enough to just get them to move on from your property or from your neighbor's property, so just try and be aware of, of our surroundings, so.
Thank you, sir. Larry?
I'm sorry that, uh, Chief is not here for what, um, I have next. About three weeks ago, I saw something remarkable, I was walking my dog through Full and Wilder Park, a couple of youth are over there throwing, playing football. Black, you know, Montevista police car pulls up and, uh, goes over and starts talking to the youth, I'm thinking, oh, whatever, they're not doing anything, and I keep walking through the park, and, uh, dog and I turn around, and we start heading back home, and, um, the police officer is throwing the football at the kids. And, uh, he, they're running plays, he's like graphing out plays. Now, I have to admit, with his police gear on, he was not very agile. But, uh, I would love to commend, uh, the Chief for creating an environment where that is accepted and permitted. If we are going to change our youth's opinion of what law enforcement is, events like this have to happen. If they are allowed to, if the public is allowed to create their image of law enforcement by what they see on TV and what they read in social media, they will always have a poor image, and it is events such as this that create a much more positive view of what law enforcement is and can do, and as I said, I'm sorry that, uh, Chief is not here to hear that.
I mean, uh, just a quick question, is there something that we can do that involves the police department?
I have a, yes, I, I had a few plans for this past summer, but with everything that happened, um, you know, we couldn't do it, but I do have a couple of things that we can do with, that I have talked to the Chief before, but.
The hopscotch or?
There'll be all things in y'all, too.
That's it.
There you go.
It's summer, it's gonna be fun.
Awesome. Gary?
Uh, yes, sir, just a couple of quickies, I wanna reiterate what Jaime mentioned about the, uh, Montevista free ice rink. I don't think that gets emphasized enough, it's smaller than, uh, Alamosa, way less crowded, and way cheaper. And we even have a limited supply of, well, of, of skates and things, but it's, uh, it's a great spot, and there's been, a lot of people have been continually out over the last six seasons or so that that's been operating, and it's, yeah. It, it, the moment, the reason there's not more is that folks just don't know about it, so, yeah, tell your friends. Football is, uh, closing out, I got a chance, uh, be, because of the virus, the Corona thing, uh, there hasn't been any, uh, any field trips with the kids, and that's kinda what I've been doing on my, uh, is that for me? Is it, uh?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Field trip with the kids' football.
Yeah, where was I? So it was, uh, it was good to be out at that, and our team is, uh, is doing pretty well. I wanted to get to the, to the game Friday, tomorrow, um, because it's our last home game, and take, uh, a disabled veteran that I, uh, have, that I've spent some time with, and, uh, turns out that, that the regulations have been reduced, so you can, you know, two per player that there, anyhow, I don't know if we're gonna make it or not, but it, uh, it would be good, the, um, if that can happen, and it is the last home game, so if your kids are involved, just, uh, be sure and get out if you can. The game we did go to, um, was, uh, was a squeaker, but it was, but we won, it was just fifty-four to, to eight. So it was, um, they're doing a, a really great, great job with that program over there. Veterans Week, which is what the proclamation was about, starts this next week, and really, if there's a veteran that you can reach out to, buy him lunch, or at least tip your hat, um, they, they, uh, sacrifice a lot, no matter, you know, whether they, they got out of it unscathed or with a, uh, with a memorial on their, uh, on their gravestone, they need to, they deserve our, our respect and our thanks and our, our, um, just, uh, just, uh, just a, uh, just a notice and a, and a thank you and a tribute. The reason I'm saying all of that is because, is because of the Corona thing and a lot of other stuff going on, there's no parade, and there is no formal tribute over at, uh, at the, um, at the Veterans Park. So, yeah, it's, that's one reason why the idea came to, you know, let's stretch this out a little bit, and anybody that you know that's a veteran, some that, uh, that you do know, and, uh, you, you can find out that they're, uh, veterans, and, and, uh, just, just pay your honor and tribute to them. Optimistics, I was gonna go into a long, uh, dissertation about that, I just wanna say, thank, thank, I didn't even talk to you afterwards, so don't run off. But that is, it's like the other meeting, I don't know if you remember, there was a lady here that wanted to help people pay their utility bills, and she, she didn't represent anything or anyone, she just wanted, there's a need here, I've, uh, met with her, she's got the, the, uh, website started and a company, and she, and, and funding ideas, and, and it's just, it's, it is so rewarding to see that kind of commitment, and that's exactly where you guys came from. Same thing with Sky High, I mean, a, a group of citizens got together, and that is what makes this community, this valley, great, is, uh, is people that do that, and in, and in closing, just wanna quote something that, uh, Counselor Locke, uh, brought up about, uh, you know, all the politics and the issues that have been going on. There is one thing that we can all agree on, and it's in the Old Testament somewhere, and around Second Chronicles, it says, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then while I hear from heaven I'll forgive their sin, and then he closes out with, and will heal their land." Which is exactly what we need, and that's all I got to say.
I forgot something, may I have a little dance, or? I either forgot it or I've not been talking yet, you can decide which one it was. I forgot to tell y'all about what Chamber of Commerce is doing, oh my goodness, this is exciting. They have had some vendors contact them, and this spurred them into action, some, some of our, uh, vendors, and they're putting on a, uh, the first ever Montevista-sponsored Chamber of Commerce Presents Online Vendor Show. It's gonna be fantastic, they did hire us up voices to do that, uh, so we're gonna be handling the details, but it's the Montevistas product. We're just the worker bees. And they had the idea brought up to them to, hopefully this doesn't happen, but if we're headed front of the lockdown, let's play the game, we've played it once, we know it better now. What made business this essential was they sold food, they sold cleaning supplies, they sold hand sanitizer. So collectively, the members of the, of the board, Montevista, uh, Montevista Chamber of Commerce are, uh, seeking people who are making hands, a hand sanitizer locally, if possible, finding local distributors for things like bleach, things like bread, um, there's just all sorts of different ways that we can do this, there were some restaurants that made take-home cash rolls during the first lockdown, but some of those closed in the afternoon, they only serve breakfast and lunch. Our retail stores did a refrigerator in their store, because they're not having to prepare the food, so they don't have to have a commercial kitchen. And when Restaurant Ace closes at two, they stop by Retail Shop B and say, "Fusion Six Cash Rolls, sell 'em." Ta-da, now they're essential, they're an essential business. So this is just a way to get around and try to hopefully keep our retail businesses open, not only for their sake, but for our holiday shopping sake. And maybe we'll have a better, you know, maybe we just need to find somebody that's gonna sell toilet paper, I don't know if that's gonna happen again or not, but that was a biggie the first time around, so, you know, I don't know. But the, but the Chamber of Commerce is, is actually working on trying to, um, make sure that most, if not all of our businesses maintain essential status, so we can stay open, our, our yellow open for business signs can stay up. Okay, I'm now, now I think I'm done.
So Make a Difference Day was two weekends ago? And the Food Bank, I think they had somewhere in the vicinity of eight hundred dollars cash donated, and I don't remember how much food, but the Horsturter was full. Probably one of the biggest events they've had, um, one of the cool things, there was a guy showed up with a dump truck, didn't have any canned goods, and he guaranteed that he'd bring food back, and he showed up with a boatload of food, so it was really cool, it was a big event, it was great. As of today, uh, December fifth, we're gonna plan a Christmas parade. Forrest, just letting you know, Mike, letting you know. Expect you to be there to help, is what I'm telling you.
Was last time, too.
Yeah, so, uh, um, that's kinda tentative right now, but that's what we're shooting for, and, uh, would like to say we're just gonna go on with it. By Halloween, we're gonna go on with it. Margot, we had two-hundred-and-fifty kids at our house, and three drunk people. Just so you know. They got their pack of candy and tattoos, things, and they went on their way.
Yeah.
Side in with Martha on the water issues, um, this is a very crucial time for this valley right now. We are totally dependent on the snowpack, along with fighting with these guys that are wanting to take our water, but, uh, it's a big issue, and it's concerning for the agriculture side of it, and we all need to really pay attention to that. Go back to Victor, kinda back up on him, about neighbors, you guys are our neighbors, we're Monty Strong, and there's too many neighbors that are being bitter toward each other, and it's caused, this has caused it. That's not us, we need to be better than that, look after your neighbor, watch out for your neighbor, pay attention to your surroundings. The bitterness will go away, but we gotta start making it go away. Okay, we are Monty Strong, we are, everybody that's been in these meetings have been coming for the last three years. We've all had disagreements, we've all had arguments, but we are here, and we are still neighbors, and Monty Strong. And as far as Veterans Day, Gary, um, I'm kinda like you, I'd really like to see something happen, even if it's a Saturday after at Memorial Park. I don't know how we're gonna be able to pull it off, but even if it's just a bunch was standing there.
No, I agree, I think if we can get some.
Just showing our respect.
People to get.
So.
Well, you know, just a suggestion, uh, to City Council, because, you know, the governor has limited certain gathering sizes, et cetera, et cetera, but, you know, if a bunch of citizens got together on Facebook and said, "Hey, show up," um, and it's a demonstration, apparently that is okay.
Yeah, we can demonstrate.
I'm not, we're demonstrating and keeping the business essential, and we're, we're learning the game, it's.
I mean, honestly.
Very, very serious, that's.
So if a bunch of people, you know, the city couldn't hold a demonstration, right, but citizens can. The city can't hold a parade, technically, but citizens can, you know, it's a form of peaceful assembly. So I don't see, um, Michael poke me really hard, but I agree with the CTE regulations, and it kinda doesn't say you can't do that. You know, particularly since you're outside. Inside, yeah, there's very specific rights, but I don't know about outside, so, um, get two football teams on the field outside, and two, give guests for player, how's that different, I don't know, so, um, not saying that in an official manner, but, you know, just, we're not, something to think about.
Turn your mic back on.
We're not hearing official either, but.
Oh, no, I just said it wasn't official on YouTube, so it's not.
Okay. All right, with that, that's.
YouTube is true. Uh, if I can add two other things really quick, Counselors, um, one is, uh, staff, I forgot to mention this in my report, but we would recommend that the City Council cancel the December seventeenth City Council meeting. Unless you're really motivated to have that one, we did cancel the last three years, you know?
And that we need a, a head nod?
What's that?
Just need a head nod for that, or do we need a motion?
Uh, we'd have to make a motion.
You'd have to make a motion. You'd have to make a motion. You know, one other quick thing before you just address that. The executive session would be, is we, will be really, really quick, I believe. So that might be one, clear the room, you know, do the executive session, clear the room, you all can just hang out, close the doors. We talk to you for four point three minutes and then we can get out of here.
Okay.
But we'll make that motion, yeah? It's hard to do it now.
So we need a motion for the meeting.
We made a motion for the December seventeenth meeting.
We'd like to make a motion to cancel the City Council meeting on December the seventeenth.
Say.
Been moved and seconded, Council, City Council meeting for December seventeenth, is there any more discussion? James?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, I need a motion going to executive session. Somebody's gotta make, move...
Or make a motion?
Someone...
To go into executive session.
Been moved and seconded, going to executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-4024B. James?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?